Is Pastor Wright out here? Pastor Wright? He's not here. Okay. Okay. We just got word that the Pastor Wright Out, Award of Life Church is unable to make it for the invocation, so we'll go straight to the meeting. And we will call the May 18th, 2022 City Council Meeting of Los Banas to order at 6:01 PM. Chief Breezy, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, and our God, the invisible, the perfect, and just as far on.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
President. Here.
Here. Here. We have a quorum. I'm going to move to the approval of the agenda. I'd just like to ask with the council's permission, if I move around the presentations a bit, so that I'll be delivering the Merced County Behavioral Health, then Mr. Bondi in Public Works, and then the high school students, and then Fire Chief Hurley, just a different order from what's listed on the agenda with the council's permission. With that, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Lambert?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lambert, a second by Councilmember Yamas, to approve the agenda as submitted with the minor alterations, as requested by the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that now brings us to our presentations, and I will go down to the podium for these. The first is Merced County Behavioral Health. Do we have here someone from them? From there? No? Okay.
I shall read it.
So, proclamation recognizing the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall well-being and mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all people can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead to full, productive lives, and whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby recognize May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Los Banas, and for the call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Los Banas to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And I have, and it is signed there by me and the city clerk. So, thank you very much to Merced County Department of Mental Health. Department of Behavioral Health is actually. Next, I understand Mr. Vi will be accepting for a couple of proclamations here. The first one is for the retirement of our public works supervisor, Jeff Bondi, who cannot make it tonight. Whereas Jeff Bondi was hired as a full-time utility maintenance one by the city of Los Banas on March 1st, 1999, and whereas Jeff Bondi promoted through the ranks of Environmental Control Specialist Training on December 1st, 1999, Environmental Control Specialist 1 on December 1st, 2000, Environmental Control Specialist 2 on July 1, 2001, Environmental Control Specialist 3 on July 1, 2005, and Public Works Supervisor on July 1, 2014, and whereas Jeff Bondi has contributed tremendously throughout his career to the community of Los Banas with his knowledge and commitment to his job, and whereas Jeff Bondi retired from the city of Los Banas as Public Works Supervisor on May 1, 2022 with 23 years of service as a city employee. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby commend Jeff Bondi on his dedication and loyalty to the city of Los Banas and congratulate him on his retirement. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation was presented to Jeff Bondi, to Mr. Vi in his place tonight, at the city council meeting held on May 18th, 2022. Mr. Vi? Mr. Vi has been handling a lot of extra duties this year. He's been covering a lot of ground for us and doing a beautiful job. And this next proclamation recognizes National Public Works Week. Sometimes we take for granted public works. We don't think about much until the drains aren't working or the garbage isn't getting picked up, and then all of a sudden, oh, that's pretty important department. And yes, indeed it is. So, this proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Los Banas, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, airports, parks, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Los Banas to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby designate the week of May 15 through 21, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the city of Los Banas, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Mr. Vi?
Well, on behalf of all of Public Works, of all the employees in Public Works, thank you very much.
Thank you. One of the things I try to do as mayor is celebrate the good stuff. So, whenever we hear of good stuff going on, we celebrate it. And there we go. In this case, we have some student good stuff, and we have Kylie Heard and McKenna Silveira to recognize tonight. McKenna Silveira is unable to make it tonight. I'll go ahead and read her certificate of recognition, and then I'll go to Kylie and ask her to come up.
Open.
That's better. Certificate of Recognition presented to McKenna Silveira, Team Silveira, Los Banas High School, in recognition of your outstanding accomplishments for the following: As a part of Team Silveira, raised over $99,000 for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, LLS, and was able to name a portfolio research grant. So, we'll have a round of applause for McKenna there. Her father supervisor, Silveira, called me. Oh, she's doing some more school and FFA, and I think tonight she's, let's see, I remember he told me, but she has another function tonight involved with the schools, and she's tremendous, doing some tremendous work. Now Kylie, if you'd come forward, please. So, our certificate of recognition for Kylie, presented to Kylie Heard, Anne's Warriors, Los Banas High School, in recognition of your outstanding accomplishments for the following: As a part of Anne's Warriors, raised $182,438 for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, awarded with a $1,000 college scholarship for second highest amount raised, awarded with the 2022 LLS Mission Award, and awarded a trip to the LLS National Convention. Congratulations, Kylie. Would you like to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you to anybody who has supported me, and I truly could not have done it without this community. The amount of support I received was absolutely amazing, and, you know, these awards aren't just for me, but this is for anybody who has been affected by cancer or is being hit by cancer right now. So, thank you, guys.
Let's see. There he is. For this one, I would like to invite the council down to join me, and firefighters, colleagues, would you come down to join me too, please, for the presentation for Chief Hurley?
There you go.
Come on over, Mason. It's a great honor for me to be able to present this. I've known Mason since he was in junior high school. Outstanding citizen, a model of integrity, and he served us so very well for so many years. So, this is a proclamation recognizing the retirement, City of Los Banas Fire Chief Mason Hurley. Whereas Mason Hurley became a member of the Los Banas Volunteer Fire Department on August 21st, 1990, and whereas Mason Hurley was hired part-time as a public utilities maintenance worker by the city of Los Banas on July 18th, 1994, and then became a full-time public works inspector training on February 10th, 1997, and whereas Mason Hurley was hired as a full-time firefighter by the city of Los Banas on July 16th, 1997, and promoted through the ranks of fire engineer on December 1st, 2001, fire captain on July 1st, 2006, assistant fire chief on February 1st, 2015, and fire chief on October 28th, 2017. And whereas Mason Hurley has contributed tremendously throughout his career to the community of Los Banas with his knowledge and commitment to his job, and whereas Mason Hurley retired from the city of Los Banas as fire chief on May 7th, 2022 with 25 years of service as a full-time city employee. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby commend Mason Hurley on his dedication and loyalty to the city of Los Banas and congratulate him on his retirement. Would you like to say a few words, Chief?
Yeah, I will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, first of all, thank you very much. It's an honor. It's a privilege, and it's very humbling to stand in front, stand up here tonight, not in uniform, but in a role of really just gracious and very thankful for having the opportunity to be part of the city, be part of the community in a way that a lot of people aren't able to. So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for your support over the years. Thank you for allowing us to do what we do in the fire service. Behind you are some fantastic individuals. They're a piece of that department, and they're a strong piece. I hope that in the future that we continue to support them as a community, as a full department, and which also supports the remaining of the city. Just real quick, I don't want to go on and on and on because there's so many people I want to thank. Commander Reyna, Commander Reyna is the acting fire chief at this role at this point. He is doing a fantastic job. I am thankful and very comforted that he's there helping keeping things in line with assistance from obviously the crews and our colleagues from the county and Cal Fire. So, thank you, Chief Valdezales, for all your support. Staff, I want to say thank you to the staff. Department heads, you are part of a very strong team. I support and appreciate you and everything you've done for me in my career and our department. So, keep up the hard work, and again, thank you for what you do. Lastly, I want to thank my parents. They're here tonight. They are the reason why I am in the fire service. Fire service is a generational career. My parents weren't in the fire service, but they do care about people and they do help people, and they taught me that, and that's what it's important, why it's important to be in the fire service, because you want to help people and do the right thing. So, thank you, Mom and Dad, for all your help. And lastly, my wife, Priscilla, and son Emmanuel, thank you for everything, all your support. They were part of this as well. They were part of being a fire chief in the fire service. They lived it along with me, and they are one of the strongest reasons why I was able to do what I do. So, thank you, and I love you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Couple of our Cal Fire firefighters have come in in the back of the room. They're probably not visible on camera, but I wanted to note that they're here tonight. Thank you for coming. And thank you all so much for your service and for your support. You are among the finest. All right. That, we would ask everyone to, if you have a cell phone, if you go ahead and silence it, turn it off so it won't ring, and then we'll move on to consideration of approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered... Oh, sorry. I skipped one. Thank you. Mr. Attorney. Item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest, that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber information table. When you come to the podium, if you would please state your name and residence, and we have public forum.
Ms. Claudia Nunez. I live at the Mobile Home Park on Pacheco, and we have been coming to the meetings so that somebody will listen to us for reals, not any of this pretend like your care. If you guys had family living at the park and they were affected by the homeless people the way we have been, all of us, you guys would have done something already. Like you said, Mayor, about being Mental Health Month, if you look at all of us, we're having mental problems because we're afraid to go out of our houses. We have caught people stealing from us. I've lived there 25 years, and I never had that experience until lately when all the homeless are there. They don't care what you guys think. They don't care what we think. They come and they steal almost in front of ours. We need your help. We don't need you guys to ignore us and think that we're going to go away if you guys ignore us. Guess what? And I'm going to say one cuss word, I'm a bitch. I don't go under the carpet very easily, and I will fight this, and I know the other people that are here are going to fight it also because we need your guys' help. Not, "Well, we'll see about that, this, we'll see about this, we'll see about that." No, we need you guys to defend us, not just ignore us, say, "Ah, they're old. They don't know what they're talking about." Guess what? We may be old, but we still know what we're doing, and we know what they're doing to us, and we have come here to this meeting time after time to try to get you guys to understand what we're going through. We need mental help to get those people out of there. We don't need them coming into our homes and stealing our stuff, or to be afraid. I go to church every morning. I'm afraid sometimes to come home and my stuff is gone. I worked my whole adult life, my whole childhood in the fields and stuff, and I have been a single parent, a lot of women are, and to think that somebody could be in your house going through your stuff and stealing it? We need help. Please help us. Please listen to us. Don't try to ignore us, please. And you guys are lucky I only used one cuss word, because I cuss a lot when I'm really upset, but I'm not going to do that. I want, and I'm speaking for all of us that live in that mobile home park, please help us. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Maria Salinas, and I live in the Rancho Los Baños Mobile Home Park. A group of us are here again tonight, speaking out in a plea for city officials to take action in relocating the homeless encampment away from our Mobile Home Park. To be fair, I do want to report that since the last city council meeting, the fence was repaired by the city, and we had almost two weeks with no drummer boy. A big thank you goes out to the police chief for his effort in dealing with the drummer. The peace and quiet was great while it lasted. Unfortunately, the drummer boy made a full-force comeback last night. To me, his noise sounded louder than ever. He just plays the drums with no care in the world and without thinking about the torture that we are having to deal with. Anyway, enough about the drummer boy. While I do see that the police chief is working with us in good faith, I cannot say the same about the rest of you. I mean, yes, you sit there and hear what we have to say, but are you listening? Now, I could be wrong about this, but that I know of, only one city council member has had the decency of coming to our Mobile Home Park and talking with us. Thank you to that city council member. We appreciate your effort. And I suggest that the rest of you move and do something because you are the ones that have the big idea of housing the homeless on the other side of our fence. You are the ones that have brought a lot of potential danger to our community. Every morning I see teenage kids and elementary school-age kids walking to the bus stop and then walking home after school. I'm telling you, having the homeless so close to us is a disaster waiting to happen. Also, tonight, you should, I guess the city clerk should have received an email for someone else that couldn't be here tonight. So, I, okay, so can we have someone else read this? Oh, perfect. Okay. So, if you can do that, please. And then, for the record, we have some pictures of things that we are seeing at our park that the homeless are... that the homeless are doing. So, we would like to submit that to the city council for you to review, please. And that is it. And too bad the fire department people left. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to them. I'm sure they're very busy. Also, the police department, I hear the sirens all the time and I'm sure they're stretched out to the max, but we also need help.
Thank you very much. And if you could give your paperwork to the city clerk, Ms. Maloney, then she'll handle that for us. Thank you once again.
Hi, I'm back. Well, I got some good news and some bad news. The good news is there's no more explosions there.
Oh, excuse me. Could you state your name and city of...
Martha Turner, resident of Los Banos.
Thank you.
And the bad news is, I caught a man just a few days ago tearing a board off my shed trying to get in. A board that I already replaced once, cost me $70 to replace it. And I ran out and I told him, "Hey, what are you doing?" And he just looked at me and I told him, "I'm going to sic our junkyard dogs on you." No disrespect. That means my manager is a junkyard dog. She's like a junkyard dog. She runs up and down there all days and hours of the night. I spoke to a couple of homeless people that were over there, too. I went over there and they're telling me that the city's going to put in permanent pods over there. I wanted to ask you about that, permanent living quarters called pods. I hope that's not the case because we're not going to stop fighting. We want our life back. We want our simple, little life back and we're not going to stop fighting. And like I said, someone's going to get hurt, either us or them, because people are getting tired of it. And someone gets hurt, it'd be time for you to lawyer up because we're going to court and 103 families will be going with me. So, something needs to be done because we're tired of it. We're tired and we're old. We lose sleep every night. They beat on the side of our house in the middle of the night, just beat on the side of your house. And we're not going to do that no more. We just flat refuse. So, you guys are in charge. You're the ones that are going to have to fix this problem. I talked to the chief already and gave him some names of some real troublemakers over there that need to be really removed. They're burning something over there the other night with black smoke barreling. That's not wood. It smelled of chemicals. It may just sick to be outside when they're doing it. That's how close we are to them. So, it's time to do something.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in the public forum?
As you know, I'm the manager of Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park.
Your name, for the record, please.
And we have put up with this for two years now.
You've got to tell them your name.
What?
You've got to tell them your name. Tell them your name, Sharon. Tell them your name.
Sharon Gray. My name is...
And where you live?
Yes.
And where you live? You've got to tell them where you live, too.
Yep. Anyway, please, we're asking you, do something. You can see from the pictures that they're coming into the park. I threw two of them out last morning, yesterday morning at 1:00. I may be older and I may be little, but I'm mean. And they come in, they go through carports, they take things, they throw their trash everywhere. They have absolutely no respect for people's property. I don't feel sorry for them because most of them are young and could get a job if they just tried, but they don't want to. Why should they? They're getting everything free. Please, help us out. We need to, they need to get away from our park. We can't put up with this much longer. And they build fires at night. With the wind, a spark goes on one of my tenants' mobiles, that whole park can go up. That's a big worry. I'm tired of staying up all night, but I don't dare go to sleep because they'll come in. Please, do something to get them out of there.
Thank you. And before you, if I could ask before you leave, if we could get you to say your last name clearly for the record?
Gray.
Gray. Sharon Gray.
Sharon Gray.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in the public forum?
Hello, Sandra Benetti, on behalf of Peninsula Clean Energy. I'm present before you this evening just to provide some information to Los Banos residents regarding Peninsula Clean Energy's E-Bikes for Everyone program. I'm happy to share with you guys that the Peninsula Clean Energy is providing up to $1,000 off the purchase price of an electric bicycle, which is also known as an e-bike. It's for income qualifying city of Los Banos residents, makes e-bikes more affordable. Our program just opened up on May 16th and will be accepting online applications through June 5th. The incentive up to $1,000 will be awarded through a lottery on June 6th and winners will have 30 days to purchase their new e-bike. You can find helpful information regarding the E-Bike for Everyone program, including qualifying criteria, the online application program, FAQs, and sources to learn more about e-bikes at peninsulacleanenergy.com/e-bikes. And in addition to that, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition is hosting a free e-bikes basics webinar and that's on Wednesday, May 25th at 6:00 PM. You can register to attend that at the link that I just provided to you guys. But I look forward to seeing Los Banos residents partaking in this program. Folks can also learn more about Peninsula Clean Energy's service for electricity generation for Los Banos by visiting the website at pencleanenergy.com/los-banos. And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak in the public forum? Seeing no one, I will go to the city clerk to see if we have any emails for the public forum.
I do have two emails.
Two emails, please.
The first email is from Ann McCauley. This is Ann McCauley, Los Banos resident. I wanted to present my remarks in person. However, tonight, our Central Valley winter flight is returning with two longtime local Vietnam veterans and it was important for my husband Ray, also a Navy Vietnam vet, and me and other local veterans to be at their homecoming at the Fresno airport. I appreciate the means to have my comments read in the council chambers. I am very disappointed and frankly disgusted that too much of what our council members asked the staff to research seems to not be thoroughly researched by you council members yourselves. If any questions are asked in the council meetings, they seem to barely scratch the service. This isn't what you're elected to do, to basically rubber stamp staff's conclusions. It takes considerable time and effort to dig deep in whatever each issue is, but I don't think every single one of you is devoting as much as needs to be done. A case in point is this pilot project to install solar panels on the community center roof. No one knows what this cost will, no one knows what this will cost, what all is involved in this pilot project. To say you will turn this over to the city manager to run with this is absolutely absurd. No costs, no known costs, no known approved budget because you don't even know the costs going in. Incredible, absolutely astounding. Every one of you who is willing to go along with this nonsense ought to rethink your purpose on this council. This sort of project ought to be open for full public discussion. No city manager should ever be given a blank check to do his own research or just submit bills that haven't been costed out, much less budgeted in advance. You all have a duty to know what's going on. This project is not ready for primetime the way it stands now. And secondly, we don't have adequate and multiple income streams to pay for our police, fire, and other infrastructure for all the new residential permits being issued. When was the last time we truly had more police and fire personnel hired to fulfill the new neighborhoods exploding everywhere? Police don't have the manpower to cruise through neighborhoods to at least show a presence except for calls. Some years ago, additional fees were added to new housing permits, but those are one-time-only fees. This council is woefully delinquent in looking at additional income streams that will bring continuous funds from every new house that is built and likewise, something from new businesses. We may not have as much control about what our representatives do at the state or national level, but I assure we are much closer to the local flagpole of governance to see what you do. I just ask that each one of you has a purpose on this council and it is to more thoughtfully represent the taxpayers in this town. The next email is from Casey Miller. Good evening, city council members. My name is Casey Miller and I am the park operator for Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. I would appreciate this email being read during the council meeting tonight. Many of you have previously received emails from me regarding the homeless encampment behind our property. If I listed each and every problem our park and our tenants have experienced with the homeless, it would take up about 30 minutes of time since I literally have 16 typed pages of documentation. It is completely overwhelming. However, if anyone would like this detailed information, I would be glad to provide it to you upon request. We have been dealing with this homeless encampment for over two years now and have continually reached out to law enforcement, code enforcement, and city officials for assistance. However, the problem still remains and we just cannot take it any longer and quite frankly, we shouldn't be expected to. Since the last city council meeting, the homeless have trespassed on our property on a daily basis, several times a day. They have tagged part of our perimeter wall as well as tagged and broken two of our speed limit signs. Another homeless man stole a Home Depot cart and loaded two sofas on it along with two mattresses and headboards and brought everything into our park. The police ended up arresting him for an outstanding warrant, but then the massive pile of debris was left here. Chief Breezy thankfully had everything removed the next day and we certainly appreciate it, but this shouldn't have happened in the first place. Children should be able to go outside and play. Our elderly and disabled tenants should feel safe where they live and be able to walk outside when they want. Our female tenants shouldn't have to carry pepper spray when they go outside. Grandparents shouldn't have to first patrol an area for hypodermic needles and human feces before their grandkids go outside. People shouldn't have to sell their homes that they have lived in for decades because they no longer feel secure. Tenants should not have to continually watch outside to make sure the fires in the homeless camp don't spread to our park and homes. Our residents should be able to actually sleep during the night instead of continually being woken up by arguments, loud music, and drum playing. Our tenants shouldn't have to lose their valuables and belongings to theft and I shouldn't have to raise our space rent exorbitantly to pay for our increased legal, administrative, and repair costs. I understand that the homeless situation is at a crisis level, but we shouldn't have to live like this. Something needs to be done and quick. The only way our tenants will feel safe, secure, and at ease again is to permanently remove the homeless from your land. There simply is no other viable option. Thank you for your time. And those are the only comments that I received by email.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. Now, we will close the public forum. Now, we'll move on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, will go it on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Ms. Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. We're at numbers 232477 through 232695 in the amount of $841,714.20. Minutes for the, and it should actually say, that's a typo, it should say May 4th, 2022, not April 20th. So, it should say minutes for the May 4th, 2022 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6492, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Los Banos and Straight Edge Roofing, Inc. for Miller &amp; Lux Roof Repair Project in the amount of $49,750. City Council Resolution Number 6493, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Los Banos and Electro-Mech Scoreboard Company for the purchase and installation of scoreboards at the Colorado Ballpark in the amount of $37,800. City Council Resolution Number 6494, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6495, authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Merced County Office of Education for School Resource Officer Services for the 2022-2025 school years. City Council Resolution Number 6496, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account proposed project list for fiscal year 2022 through 2023. City Council Resolution Number 6497, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number nine to the landscape maintenance services contract between the city of Los Banos and Ronnie's, Inc., adding five new landscape areas for bi-weekly landscape and irrigation maintenance services in the amount of $2,407.73 monthly. City Council Resolution Number 6498, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Los Banos and Ronnie's, Inc. for the Vineyard Median renovation project in the amount of $51,975. City Council Resolution Number 6499, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Los Banos and Ronnie's, Inc. for the Badger Flat Right-of-Way renovation project in the amount of $34,325. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Are there any items that any council member would like removed for discussion or a separate Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull items I and J.
I and J. For discussion or separate vote?
For discussion and a separate vote.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like item E for discussion and separate vote.
Item E. Very good. So, let's go ahead and go through these in the order they're on the agenda and then come back to the rest of the consent agenda. So, let's start with item E. And that is City Attorney, Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Yamas's request.
So this is a resolution in accordance with Assembly Bill three-sixty-one, which you all know was passed by the legislature last year to allow for legislative bodies to have their meetings in a virtual standpoint. And it's a result of the governor's executive order. It's a, excuse me. It's kind of a modification to, of the Ralph M. Brown Act to allow for virtual teleconferencing meetings as opposed to in-person meetings. The city council has adopted similar resolutions all last year during the height of the pandemic. This resolution was asked to come back to you, I believe, on a council member's request. And this resolution is a little bit different than the others that you considered in the past. And this resolution, in the actual order of the resolution, does not require you to go back to virtual meetings, but allows you to go back to virtual meetings if they're COVID-related. You can continue to meet in person according to this resolution and it will not change that. It's just basically a resolution to adopt, adopt for the flexibility. Should there be another outbreak, COVID-related, where a meeting would not be able to be had because of COVID-related issues? For instance, if a councilperson tested positive and was able, was not able to attend a meeting, the meetings could then be held virtually to allow that councilman to attend the meeting in a virtual format. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I just, I understand the explanation. However, I don't see us having any restriction that if there is some kind of a COVID-related outbreak or situation that we could not vote to go into teleconference or remote meetings. So again, there's nothing in the current legislation which prevents us from doing this. And it just seems like we're altering this just for convenience. Again, there's no need to alter this, to alter it in this manner. That's my only concern. Thank you.
So if you'd like me to address that?
That's fine, sir.
So this, this resolution is really designed to allow for, to pivot to virtual meetings in the situation where maybe you can't get a quorum together in person to actually vote to have virtual meetings. You already have this in place. So for instance, if a majority of the council tested positive and you wanted to continue your meetings, you would not be able to have a virtual meeting in order to adopt AB three-sixty-one resolution so that you could continue to have your meetings virtually. So the, the body of the resolution clearly states that this is not a return to in-person meetings, but it's to allow you to, for COVID-related reasons, to return to a virtual meeting if necessary. So that, that's what I thought was my direction in terms of putting this resolution together. So there are circumstances where the body could not come together in person because of COVID to even adopt AB three-sixty-one resolution to allow you to return to virtual meetings. So the idea behind this resolution, and it's very similar to other resolutions up and down the state, it's allow, to allow the city to be able to pivot should there be a COVID-related issue to arise that doesn't allow you to meet in person. So that would be my response to your question.
Well, thank you for that. That helps clarify it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Since you asked for a separate vote, the chair will entertain a motion to approve item E on the consent agenda. Oh, Mr. Lambert wanted to speak. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I just want to get some clarification there.
Please.
So if one person comes down positive, is that councilman able to attend the meeting virtually or does everybody have to go virtual?
Well, according to the resolution, the entire meeting can be virtual. I don't know what our IT capabilities are. So I believe we would have to return to a Zoom-type format to allow all five council members to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Okay, so item clarified. Is there a motion to approve item E? Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Council, City Council Resolution Number six-four-nine-four as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve item E as, item E in Council Resolution Number six-four-nine-four as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Vaughn. Now we will go to item I as requested by Ms. Lewis and this is handled by Public Works Director, City Engineer Ton. Let's see, there he is. He's got his mic ready.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I have Joe Hyam, our operations manager's here. He can provide a quick discussions on the item.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, City Council. I'm available for questions.
Oh, sorry. Let me get you on again there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, there's nothing that I disagree with either I or J. But these are significant amount of investments that we're putting in our city right now. As some of us may know, Los Angeles has already converted to a two-day watering week. I read today where the governor may be coming up with a new water reduction plan for cities in California due to the droughts. And so I, I really don't want to see us lose our investments. You know, this is a lot of money we're putting out to beautify our city and I would like to see it remain whole. So I discussed this already and I'm going to hold this up just for visual sake with our Public Works Director. And it's a product called AquaSmart. It's a professional product. It can be purchased at Ewing or go to the company itself and purchase it. And it's a silica sand that absorbs the weight of water and holds it at the root of plants. So I use this in my, on my own property and you only have to put it down once every five years. So the last ability is very long. Ewing sells it to either Ronnie's or the city for fifty dollars for a forty-pound bag. I think they'll, they'll be able to scrounge up enough maybe for a couple of pallets. I think it's worthwhile for us to invest in this product to save our landscaping. And I'll just say this right now rather than at my council time is that we've got a lot of parks in our city with grass. We, we've recently purchased an air raider. And so we have the perfect opportunity to be proactive looking at what the governor may come down with an edict to save our parks and to save our grass. So this is my only thing that I wanted to present tonight in regards to those two items is to have Ronnie purchase some of this or the city purchase it and put it down on that new landscaping that's going in so that we don't lose our, our, our investment for our city and for our residents. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other council member have any questions of Mr. Hyam on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Lewis, would you like to make the motion for item I?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number six-four-eight-nine, adding that either the city or Ronnie's Landscaping purchased AquaSmart Pro to add to the new landscaping that's going down.
Mr. Vaughn?
I could just make a comment. Both of these contracts were competitively bid. The specs that the city was given to the vendors and so I would guess that Ronnie's Landscaping did not figure in the cost of the product that Ms. Lewis is talking about in their, in their pricing. So that would, that would have to be changed and come back to the city council unless the city bought it, I guess.
So with that in mind, if I made the motion for the city to purchase the product, would that make a difference to have to have him bring that contract back?
So I, I would suggest that there be a little bit more research done into the cost of the product and what it would cost for these particular items, whether we're talking about two hundred dollars or twenty thousand dollars so that there can be some type of discussion and decision made on, on that product specifically.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I, as I said, I contacted Ewing. I also spoke to the company and the, the cost to the city, the cost to Ewing, I mean, the cost to Ronnie's for a forty-pound bag would be fifty dollars. For a pallet of forty, forty bags of that size would be two thousand and half of a pallet would be a thousand dollars. So the product spreads out pretty far, but I, I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. I'm not sure how quickly he has to start on this. But I think the investment is really important to our city so that we're not losing our landscaping.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. So we can entertain the motion as it sits and then we can have staff research the product and maybe come back to us with this if necessary. Or if it's a small, if it's a small amount, then the city staff has discretion to make those decisions. So if it's, if it's above our contract requirements, then they would have to bring it back. If not, they could, based on the suggestion, purchase it and use it. Is that correct, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay. So if you'd like to make the motion as it's written and then we'll have those suggestions that staff can take.
Okay, so let me be clear on this. I, I don't have a problem making the motion, but for the cost of the product, since it involves other contractors who bid it on it, would it be more appropriate to add in the motion to have staff come back and bring a price for perhaps the city to purchase the product rather than Ronnie's?
Mr. Vaughn?
So that it doesn't change the contract.
If I'm the vendor, I'm not going to change my price to add to the project. So I don't know what Ronnie would do. No idea. I have no idea what, what the response to that would be.
Okay, so I'll, what I'll do is I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number six-four-nine-eight as read by title and ask that the city come back with a price on the cost of adding this product into the ground, the AquaSmart Pro product, and that based on the price cost, that the city would look at purchasing the product so that we don't have to change the contract.
Very good. Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert? Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Mayor Portem Lambert to approve City Council Resolution six-four-nine-eight as read with the suggestion to, and the request to bring back information on the product mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. And then item J, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Since it's basically the same thing for landscaping that's going to be initiated in, in a particular area, my same request would be for that is to approve Resolution Number six-four-nine-nine as read by title and to request the city staff to investigate the cost of the product to, the cost of AquaSmart product for this particular site and that the city would pay for the cost of the product.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, a second by Mayor Portem Lambert to approve City Council Resolution Number six-four-nine-nine with the, with the suggestions and requests made by Ms. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carried. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyam. Thank you, Mr. Ton. And I have no further requests for items to be pulled from the consent agenda. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as the remaining items. Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the remaining items.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lambert, a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the remainder of the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. There's a big consent agenda, lots of work on staff's part there that gets, goes into every one of those little items. It looks like just a simple thing on the page, but there's pages and pages of information that is given to council so that we can make excellent decisions. And we appreciate it very much. Now we'll move on to our public hearings. We have two this evening. The first one is item A. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Our first item, item A, to receive public comment and consideration of an ordinance to adopt Laspanas Police Department Military Equipment Policy as required by California Assembly Bill four-eight-one and Government Code Section seven-zero-seven-zero-dash-seven-zero-seven-five. And it is attached with the ordinance, which we will have a first reading of this evening, an introduction. The ordinance number is one-one-nine-six and it reads, adopting a military equipment policy and adding Chapter Twelve to Title Four of the Laspanas Municipal Code to adopt a military equipment use ordinance. And for this item, we go to Police Commander Melden.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. My name is Justin Melden. I'm an operations commander for the police department. Tonight, we're going to be talking about AB four-eight-one. So does everybody have a copy of the PowerPoint so you can read it a little easier? Okay, so we're going to go over a few questions. Why Assembly Bill four-eight-one? How AB four-eight-one defines military equipment? And why we use the equipment, why it's so important to our mission? We'll talk about how we buy the equipment. We'll talk briefly about our inventory and how we plan on receiving feedback from our residents. Before I get too far into the presentation, I'd like to thank Chief Breezy for pushing our department to remain transparent. For years, we've had our policy complement and commendation process readily available for online to receive any community feedback. We also hold an open door policy for residents in our community to provide any administrative feedback. I would also like to thank City Attorney Vaughn for the help in, he was instrumental in assisting me prepare this ordinance that you have before you. I'd also like to thank Jaleen DeMello for helping me with the public hearing portion of this. Thank you very much. So a little bit about AB four-eight-one. Every law enforcement agency in the state of California is going to have to comply with AB four-eight-one. It's, it's not optional. It's a mandatory requirement that, that we have to comply with. So why AB four-eight-one? In September of 2021, Governor Newsom signed several police reform bills to increase transparency, improve oversight, and increase accountability. The bill requires agencies to publish how and when we purchase equipment and report annually on any new purchases and any use of equipment as well as document any concerns or complaints the community has provided regarding the use or application of the equipment. We're also mandated to document any internal audits. Each year, we will give an annual report to council anytime the equipment is used, deployed, or purchased. Part of the requirements in AB four-eight-one is to reach out to the community, which is why we're here today to prevent, present this material publicly. Our first annual report is due May of 2023, which would include, as I mentioned, any audits or, or use of equipment. AB four-eight-one requires council approval for the continued use of items purchased before January first of 2022. It also identifies the items that need to be contained in the report and will providing, will be providing this information to council each year moving forward. Our annual report will include how and when the equipment was used, any costs associated with the maintenance of the equipment, and any was used, any costs associated with the maintenance of the equipment, and any internal audits we have performed on the equipment. We will also report any complaints we've received from the community. So let's start with the first basic question. Why do we need this equipment? We have several departmental goals, which these pieces of equipment help us achieve. We expect this equipment to positively influence outcomes by making it safer for the involved parties, community, and the police. We use these tools to decrease the risk of civilian deaths and increase the ability to protect civil rights and civil liberties of people who are subject to arrest but are noncompliant. In many cases, we expect these tools to improve physical and psychological well-being by decreasing the likelihood for force application and improving the chances of a safe, peaceful resolution. This equipment provides a safer option when apprehending violent offenders who may be in our community. For example, this year alone, we've arrested several homicide suspects from our outlying communities. This equipment is often instrumental when addressing these threats associated with those individuals who have displayed violent tendencies in the past. We've all heard the term de-escalation. It's the buzzword for all the right reasons. We want a safe, peaceful resolution for the involved parties, the public, and for law enforcement. The question is, how do we get there? In order to de-escalate, officers must first determine the suspect's actions, what the suspect is doing, what are their capabilities, are they armed, do they have access to improvised weapons, and what are their intentions? These questions are often the most difficult to determine and almost always the most difficult to influence: actions, capabilities, and intentions. This equipment affords officers the option to address and contain the actions of those individuals who are noncompliant by providing the ability to react to suspects' actions, change or mediate the suspect's capabilities, and influence the suspect's intentions. How do we do this? Three factors. The three factors that influence our ability to make sound decisions are time, distance, and cover. Having time to discuss potential solutions or contingencies to develop plans generally leads to a better chance of success. Distance from a problem changes the calculation. It's one thing to determine somebody has a firearm from 100 feet away and another from 5 feet away. And cover. Cover essentially means to stop any bullets from impacting. The urgency of any incident revolves around the risk factors for all parties involved. So several of the items that are listed in AB 481 afford officers the ability to gain time, distance, and cover. The goal is to take these subjects who are noncompliant into custody with the least restrictive options available. A little side note is that anytime somebody uses any of the equipment that's outlined in AB 481, they have already received advanced post-training, so they have certifications that allow them to use the equipment that's outlined in AB 481. So how the equipment can be funded? Essentially, equipment can be funded by any mechanism. There's no restrictions on how or what we use to purchase or maintain the equipment. Historically, we've relied heavily on the general fund and grant funding for the use and maintenance of this equipment. Something to note that we do not have any inventory of equipment obtained through the 1208 or the 1033 program, which is government surplus military equipment. So you'll see the equipment categories that are designated by AB 481. There's 15 categories, and at its core, this Assembly Bill is about three things. What equipment do we have? How much does it cost? And what do we use it for? Out of the 15 categories outlined by the Assembly Bill, we have equipment that are contained within five of the categories. So this is a brief snapshot of the equipment that we use, and this bill allows us to answer any questions that residents may have regarding our equipment. We have a more detailed list of our equipment readily available on our website, and it's contained as Attachment 706, as the attachment to the proposed policy. We will update the list annually and as part of our reporting requirement and maintain that list on our website permanently. Now, let's go briefly into the equipment. So the first category that we have there is the unmanned aircraft. Essentially, that's drones, and it ranges from anything from a $200 training drone to a $2,000 piece of equipment that we deploy on critical incidents. So any type of equipment that meets that wording, we have to report on. The second item that we have is in Equipment Category 5, and that is our mobile command post. Many of you have seen it deployed out on community events. It's the bumper pole trailer that we have. We use that for command and control also. And this is a requirement that we report on that. The third item is our patrol platforms, our rifles and our bullets that we use on a patrol side. We've had that in play for over a decade. But now, this is an increased reporting requirement, so it's part of AB 41. The fourth is the pepperball platform that we use. Essentially, that looks like a paintball gun. I don't know if anybody has seen that deployed, but it looks like a paintball gun, and there are small projectiles that are expelled that contain pava powder. And what that is, is it's essentially an irritant that allows us to influence a suspect's actions by diverting their attention from what they were initially focused on. And the final category is our beanbag shotgun rounds, which is a less lethal round, and our 40-millimeter sponge platform, which is just a projectile. It's a sponge-based platform projectile. So how does this affect Los Banas? We come to you because we need your support to continue to use these items. If we do not gain council approval, LBD will stop the use of the items listed in AB 481. If we do not gain the support, this would adversely impact our ability to give and receive mutual aid in the future, as well as it has the likelihood of negatively impacting our public safety. Public comment requirement for AB 481. AB 481 requires elected officials to approve or not approve the proposed policy. This is a public presentation, and we're requiring with AB 481 by doing so. We believe this equipment provides a safer community and affords the ability for our officers to address low-frequency and high-liability events. So to wrap this all up, in September of 2021, Governor Newsom signed a series of police reform bills designed to increase transparency and accountability, and each agency in the state of California has to comply with this. There's nothing unique to Los Banas. We're just part of the overall reporting requirement. We will ensure compliance with the annual reporting guidelines, and we use Lexipol as our policy. They generate our policy. They generate policy for hundreds of agencies in the state, so we adapt Lexipol's policies to fit the needs of Los Banas Police Department. With a summary, staff is recommending that you waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance adopting a military equipment policy and adding Chapter 12 to Title IV of the Los Banas Municipal Code to adopt a military equipment use ordinance. And I'm available for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, Commander. Before we open the public hearing, we'll go see if any councilmembers have any questions. Ms. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commander, thank you. I just had a couple of questions. You were saying that before utilizing some of this equipment, your officer will be trained in that or are trained in that?
Yes, sir.
And right now, all of your officers are trained in the equipment that we have in inventory?
That is correct. Yes, sir. Anybody who deploys any of this equipment has already been trained and certified for the use and deployment of these items.
Very good. Now, do you have any plans or ideas to purchase any of these MRAPs or track vehicles?
Nothing in the immediate future, but we do rely on our regional SWAT team. And by having this military equipment policy, we are able to receive mutual aid should an event arise.
Concern is that these MRAPs and these larger vehicles, their maintenance is heavy. That's why the military abandoned them over in Iraq and other places, because they're very hard to maneuver inside of a grid, internal grid square kind of housing area. So again, just caution when using that, because they can just suck your budget dry really quick.
Thank you.
Now, I had a question regarding 50-cal ammunition. It was a conflict. Maybe I just don't understand. Does this bill allow for up to, or does it include 50-caliber ammunition or weapon systems?
So any 50-caliber system is an additional requirement. That's just additional category. The Los Banas Police Department, we do not have any 50-caliber ammunition or firing mechanisms for that ammunition. So we are not reporting on that.
All right. Very good. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Commander.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Any other councilmembers have any questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing, and we will receive public comment. So at this time, I will officially open the public hearing regarding Ordinance Number 1196. Anyone in the public would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and come back to council for a motion to approve ordinance, actually, to waive the first reading and then introduce Ordinance Number 1196. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1196 as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Councilmember Yamas, to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1196. I can do this by acclamation. I don't need a roll call on this, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried. First reading has been waived. Now, Chair will entertain a motion to introduce Item 1196. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 1196 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Mayor Portem Lambert to introduce Ordinance Number 1196. Roll call, please. Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Ordinance is adopted. Introduced. Getting ahead of myself. At the next meeting, then we do the second reading and adoption. And getting back at this dais feels good, but I got to get back in this way. Now, and we want to thank Commander Melden for his excellent presentation and all the staff involved supporting and bringing that to us. Very much appreciated. Item B, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of a final development plan, Number 2021-01, and associated development agreement for Villages 5 at Stone Creek, Quail Meadows, consistent with the Stone Creek Environmental Impact Report, EIR. Proposed project consists of the subdivision of approximately 70.5 acres into 271 single-family residential lots located south of West Pacheco Boulevard, west of Dock Avenue, and east of the city limit line. Assessor parcel numbers 430-010-024 and number 430-010-026, number 430-010-027, number 430-010-028, number 430-010-035, number 430-103004, Anderson Homes. And with this will be attached City Council Resolution Number 6500 and uncodified ordinance Number 1197. And so for this item, we go to Community and Economic Development Director, Sousa Elms. Ms. Elms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just a little bit of background on this particular item. Back in November of 2003, the Los Banas Planning Commission recommended approval of the Stone Creek Area Plan. And then subsequently, in April of 2004, the City Council approved the Stone Creek Area Plan. What that was, was it facilitated the annexation of over 401 acres into the city of Los Banas. And included with that development, it consisted, or with that annexation, which was facilitated through an area plan, it provided amenities such as the donation of 120 acres for the college site, and that's where Merced College is currently located, the development of the Olivera Park, which we use for regional soccer fields, the school site, which is now the current home of Creekside Junior High School, over 350,000 square feet of commercial shopping center. This is the location of the Stone Creek Plaza. And due to the pre-annexation development agreement and what was negotiated with this annexation, major anchors such as Lowe's and Target were located at this particular shopping center. And then it provided the development of the storm drain basin on Badger Flat Road, the installation of utilities to serve Merced College, and the dedication of 1.4-acre parcel for the Los Banas Fire Department for a future fire station. I do want to note, just take a minute to note, that back in 2007, there was an approved vesting tentative map for this area, which was to facilitate 53 single-family residential lots. It had a development agreement, which expired in 2017, and then the vesting tentative map subsequently expired in 2018. And because of the expiration of those entitlements, when Anderson Homes approached the city about subdividing that area, staff worked with the developer to remap the area conducive to the market today and to better utilize circulation system. So the Planning Commission, back in December of 2021, held a public hearing. And at that public hearing, they approved, at the close of the public hearing, they approved vesting tentative map Number 2021-01, and that was to subdivide approximately 70.5 acres into 271 single-family detached residential lots. And then they recommended approval to the Los Banas City Council a final development plan, Number 2021-01, and associated development agreement. So the proposal before you tonight, and this is what tonight's focus is about, is on the final development plan, which sets forth the proposed layout, circulation, architecture, street sections, landscape concepts, and site features. It covers approximately 15% of the Stone Creek Area Plan, and it considers a development agreement which set forth the terms for the development of the project site. It also consists of special conditions, which have been negotiated with the developer in addition to the city standards. This is the location. It is located in the southwest quadrant of the city of Los Banas. It is south of Pacheco Boulevard, just east of the Los Banas Creek. It is, excuse, yes, east of the Los Banas Creek, west of Villages 2A and 3 of the villages at Stone Creek, and it would be north of Pioneer Road. This aerial highlights the Stone Creek Area Plan. And as I mentioned with the previous slide, this subdivision covers about 15% of that area in blue. So what was originally annexed into the city of over 401 acres back in 2004, this subdivision occupies about 15% of that blue area. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, staff determined that this project is within the scope of the Stone Creek Area Plan Program EIR, State Clearinghouse Number 2006061015, and was certified by the Los Banas City Council. The proposed project was adequately described, examined, and evaluated within the EIR, and no significant new information or changes in the environmental setting have occurred that would result in new or greater significant effect not studied in the Environmental Impact Report. The Environmental Impact Report evaluated the need for a fire station within it, and this project... And this project provides a 1.4 acre site that has been already dedicated to, for the development of a fire station as Lot B to the city of Los Banas through an irrevocable offer of dedication. And then, the Environmental Impact Report contemplated a total buildout of over eighteen hundred residential units within the area plan. And to date, over a thousand units have been approved thus far within the area plan. And with this proposal, that would bring approved development up to twelve hundred and eighty-one units, well within the threshold of the EIR. So, the final development plan analysis, the purpose, in accordance with the Los Banas Municipal Code, is that plan developments are to provide an integrated neighborhood developed, development not possible under traditional lot-by-lot zoning. So, it encourages innovative and creative development by allowing flexibility in land use and design, and it allows the opportunity to provide amenities and conveniences while maintaining a suitable neighborhood environment and permits development based on a high standard of performance and design by creating greater efficiency in land use by providing flexibility and strict application of the zoning code. So, what the PD zoning does, it allows for us with the, the negotiation of amenities provided within the development, which I stated that was, you know, within the first slide, of all of those items that were provided to the city for a benefit with the annexation, then the city at that time allowed the plan development zoning overlay, which allows for that flexibility in zoning. So, really what it does is it allows us to provide flexibility in the strict application of, say, a front yard setback or a rear yard setback or a reverse corner lot. It allows for a unique neighborhood that is not just so cookie cutter. The project design, the intent of the design within this proposal is to prevent, present a diverse selection of production homes positioned on a wide range of lot sizes with varying widths, and the density provided is 5.96 dwelling units per acre. There is a medium density component within this subdivision that is within our general plan requirements, which the threshold is seven units, and the medium density component is 9.15 dwelling units per net acre. But overall, it does provide us 5.96 dwelling units when you take the total two hundred and seventy-one units. So, this is the subdivision, and this is within the final development plan of how the circulation would work and the layout of the site. One key component of the project design is the Pioneer-Pacheco Connector. That is in gray, and it's all the way on the west side of the development, next to the yellow lots, which represent single-family detached units. This plugs into the current grid system within the Stone Creek Development. And if you were really zoning in on that aerial that I previously showed, it's a part of the horseshoe, and it's one of the last puzzle pieces of the big horseshoe off of Badger Flat Road. So, the architecture, it is product homes. These are a product of Anderson Homes, which in the market today is on the high end. It's definitely not a, I shouldn't say definitely, but it's not typically a starter home type product. This is an elevated, higher end of the market within the city of Los Banas. They do provide twelve different designs, and it's traditional American architecture that's consistent with the Stone Creek Villages seven and four to the east of the project site. So, the circulation, Stone Creek Boulevard is designated as an arterial, that's within the final, excuse me, Final Development Plan. Within that Boulevard, there's no houses fronting that particular arterial. It is a hundred feet wide right-of-way. It has two travel lanes, a fourteen-foot landscape median, a five-foot park strip, a five-foot sidewalk, and a five-foot minimum planter area and masonry wall. And this is just a continuation of the portion of Stone Creek Boulevard that has already been built out and is connected at Prairie Springs. And then, the other arterial included is the Pacheco Pioneer Connector, which is, also has no houses fronting, as I stated, is on the very west end of the project site. It also consists of a hundred-foot right-of-way with two travel lanes, a sixteen-foot landscape median, a ten-foot Class I bike and pedestrian trail, and a masonry wall. And then, the local street network is consistent with the Villages four and seven to the east of this project and the rest of the Stone Creek Area Plan. So, the infrastructure, the water system will connect at Stone Creek Boulevard within our water grid system. I will note that the infrastructure has already been designed and considered within the city's master plans for water, sewer, and storm drain. Sewer will connect at Stone Creek Boulevard, and then the drainage is designed and piped according to our city standards and specifications, and then it is designed to go out to the Badger Flat Storm Drain Basin out in that direction, designed and calculated to hold drainage from this entire area plan. The project has been contemplated, as I said, in the city's utility master plans and will be sized to accommodate the use and will be built in accordance with the master plans. Within the water master plan, it specifically describes well number sixteen as necessary for this end, the southwest quadrant. The city is currently working on well number sixteen, which will provide more water service to this area. However, this area has already been tested, and we will be able to serve water for this subdivision. Development Agreement. This is a legally binding contract between the city of Los Banas and a project developer that delineates the terms and conditions of the proposed development project. It allows the developer to secure vested rights, and it allows the city to secure certain benefits. So, these are benefits that have been negotiated with the developer that they necessarily wouldn't be required to do per the Subdivision Map Act, for instance, or, say, the city standards. So, it's commonly used for development, which are implemented and phased over a long period of time, and it provides assurance to both parties that the terms of the agreement, the conditions of approval, will not change. And it protects the developer from expending energy and money on a project only to have the terms and conditions and standards changed before the development is completed. So, it's really the benefit to the developer is that they know for certain that what is within their development agreement allows them to do what they've been approved to do without the city changing the rules on them. The development agreement has three defining characteristics. It allows greater latitude than other methods of approval to advance local land use policies in sometimes new and creative ways. It allows public agencies greater flexibility in imposition conditions and imposing conditions and requirements on proposed projects, and affords project proponents greater assurance that once approved, their projects can be built. And DA's, the development agreements have historically been used as a growth management tool. That's what we, back in the early 2000s, that's typically what we use development agreements for. We are in the preliminary stages of revising our growth management policy. That will be within our new general plan update, which will set those policies and guidance. So, provisions have been incorporated into this development agreement that requires the property to follow any future adopted revised growth management policy, but would not apply to, to the project for the first year if the city should implement a policy within the first year of this project is adopted by the city council. Benefits to the city for this particular development agreement, it's a continuation of the plan development known as Stone Creek South. We want that continuity and that cohesiveness of the existing development. It's the formation or annexation of the property to a community facilities district. This is with each new residential dwelling unit built. It is on the annual property tax. It's, the community facilities district is for public safety specifically, which goes to our police and fire. So, each unit annually pays for police and fire. It's also for the formation, oop, go back, it's for the formation and annexation of the property to a landscape and lighting district. And this is for the purpose of funding the maintenance and areas of those public landscape areas, also includes signage, public lighting, and traffic signal maintenance. That's all funded through the property taxes of each residential unit. It also, the benefit to the city is the dedication of the fire station site and the dedication of a hundred-foot right-of-way for a roadway and utility purposes for the Pioneer-Pacheco Connector Road. Within this particular development agreement, the developer would be paying and contributing to the city, it's over fifteen hundred dollars in an in-loo fee per unit for the construction of the roadway. There is less a credit, and that is anything that's in excess of ninety feet. So, staff was determined that had the city not proposed the Pacheco Pioneer Connector, that the developer still would have been required to finish out the Badger Flat Loop Road, which was required within the Stone Creek Area Plan to be ninety feet wide. So, the developer will be paying an in-loo fee for their portion of construction within that ninety feet of right-of-way that they would have already have been required to build, but the excess, which is ten feet, the city will credit back to the developer. And that's all been negotiated within the development agreement. Also, within the development agreement, but really outside of the benefit to the city of Los Banas, is there are requirements for undergrounding of a concrete ditch. So, it's an underground pipeline, which would be in coordination with CCID, and the development of a masonry wall along the west property. It would be the western portion of the right-of-way, which would be the future Pacheco Pioneer Connector. And this is in accordance with a separate private agreement with Mr. Sadler and Anderson Homes. But this was to ensure that Mr. Sadler's agreement with Anderson Homes was fulfilled. So, public comment. Public hearing notices were published and mailed to the three hundred-foot radius on May 6, 2022. And as of today's date, one comment letter was received by Mr. Sadler, and our city clerk has that letter, and when the public hearing is open, she will be able to read that into the record. So, the recommendation at this time, staff is recommending the adoption of Resolution number 6500, approving the final development plan, number 2021-01, for Quail Meadows, Villages at Stone Creek Five, and waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1197 to approve a development agreement between the city of Los Banas and Anderson Homes for Quail Meadows, Villages at Stone Creek Five. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Let's go ahead and see if council has any questions at the beginning here before we go to the public hearing. Any questions from council of Ms. Elms at this time? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing, and let's go ahead and begin with that email, if we could, Ms. Melanie. Let me get, make sure we got, there you are.
My name is Kenneth Sadler. I am the owner of the adjacent property known as parcel number two and number three, rest of the proposed development of Anderson Homes, plan number 2021-01. For the record, I am not opposing the development agreement, number 2021-01. I only want to make sure that the city council is aware that development agreement, number 2021-01, Anderson Property, is divided into two parcels, parcel number one and parcel number two. Parcel number one of Anderson Property runs along the east side of Sadler parcel number two and number three. Parcel number one of Anderson Property has restrictive covenants regarding development of parcel number one that has been recorded, doc number 2020021789 on 7/1/2020, and memorialized by the city of Los Banas. The recorded doc, 2020021789, addresses several parts of the development on Anderson parcel number one concerning Sadler parcel number two and number three. The restrictive covenants and other rights and benefits granted to the covenantee and his successors and assigns by this agreement shall be appurtenant to parcel number two and number three of Sadler property and benefit and run with parcel number two and number three. The restrictive covenants shall burden and run with parcel number one, Anderson Property. All the agreements are in the recorded document, number 2020021789. Thank you, signed, Ken Sadler. And he included a map that I'll share with the council after the council meeting.
Thank you very much. And, thank you, Mr. Sadler. Any other comment in the public hearing? Anyone else like to speak in the public hearing? Please state your name and city of residence.
Kathy Ballard, a resident of Los Banas. Stacy, it was great what you said, it narrowed it down from ten questions down to two. The original four hundred acres, was there any starter homes that were supposed to be built, and has that requirement been met? And then, the other question I have is, we went from fifty to two hundred homes in that space? That's a huge jump. And my concern is the amount of money that is accommodated to the city in regards to that many homes, and how do we recoup that? And also, the water intake for two hundred-plus more residents in the city of Los Banas, when we're still so unsure on the amount of water that we'll be having. The other question I had was just one, did this go to the planning commission? I don't remember seeing it. It's already been through that?
Yes, December 8, 2021.
That's what I wanted to make sure. I'll go back and look at records. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballard. And so, questions including the acre in starting, starter homes, and can we, can we address those? Yes, please. Ms. Elms, if you'd like to address those questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, Villages one, two, A, one, two, two, A, and three are all starter homes. But as I think Anderson Homes has progressed within the market, their niche seems now, since the recession, to be on that higher end, which, so, within the city of Los Banas, it provides a diversity within our housing stock. We are not just monotone starter homes. We provide a variety of housing stock for all different income levels for single-family dwelling units.
Thank you very much. And our report indicates that our well sixteen will have sufficient water, and so, we're pleased to know that. We have to be very careful with our water. So, do I have anyone else who would like to speak in the public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor Freya and council members. My name is Michael Anderson with Anderson Homes. Thank you, Director Elms, for your presentation. I just wanted to give you a brief background on my family and our company. My dad started building in Los Banas in, in the 1980s, and we're very proud of our communities. We have some very desirable neighborhoods. It's neat being the second generation and seeing some of these, I guess, dreams that my dad had, and with the Stone Creek Area Plan being approved in 2004, it's always neat, you know, seeing the progress we're making, and we're really proud to have recreational amenities like Olivera Park, exciting shopping like Target has Stone Creek Plaza. It's great to see the Creekside Junior High School there, and we're really excited about this, this next phase. I also want to... I also want to talk a little bit about some of our involvement in the community. And it's been great to get to know more people in the community, like the fire chief Mason Hurley. We have a giving back promotion that we do each year, where we raise money and awareness for local nonprofits. And so that's been really great, raising money for Police Activities League and the volunteer firefighters, as well as Friends of Los Banas Library. Also, my parents, as Stacy mentioned, donated the land to Merced College, 120 acres. That was great to attend that 50th anniversary celebration last year. And just wanted to thank you for your consideration this evening. And my coworker, Vice President Gina Waldron, and I are here if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Does council have any questions of Mr. Anderson? Mr. Lambert? No, okay, that's an old clue. So, no questions? Thank you very much. I will say that I'm very pleased to see a dedicated property for a fire department. We do not have a fire station south of Pacheco Boulevard. And it'd be very nice to see one go in as soon as we can. Thank Mr. Vaughn and your representatives for negotiating these things, getting these amenities, and getting these services, and getting these fees, working this out so that when we, when houses do get built, that we're able to service the people who buy those homes. Otherwise, we're doing a disservice to them.
You're welcome. We're excited for that, too. And we are actually at the fire department and meeting with Mason Hurley and looking at some of his different locations. So we're very excited to be able to provide that site.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I go to council for a motion. I had that, don't you hate it when a thought just goes away? So anyway, I'll probably remember it right in the middle of something else. Thank you very much. And give my regards to your father. So, chair will entertain a motion to approve city council resume, adopt city council resolution number 6500, approving final development plan 2021-01 for Quail Meadows Villages at Stone Creek 5. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6500 as read by title.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, council member Lambert will second that.
Thank you. Motion by council member Lewis, second by Mayor Portem Lambert, to approve city council resolution number 6500. Mr. Jones, I see you queued up. Any discussion?
No discussion, I was given.
Okay, very good, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and it's a resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Now we will go to the uncodified ordinance number 1197. And this is approving a development agreement between the city of Los Banas and Anderson Homes, a California corporation for development of approximately 70.5 acres, generally located south of West Pacheco Boulevard and west of Stone Creek Boulevard, more specifically identified as such as parcel numbers 430-010-024, 430-010-026, 430-010-027, 430-010-028, 430-010-035, and 430-103-004, Quail Meadows Villages at Stone Creek 5. And Mr. Jones? Would you like, uh, chair will entertain a motion to waive the first reading?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1197.
Thank you. And do I have a second, Ms. Lewis?
Second the motion.
I have a motion by council member Jones and a second by council member Lewis to waive the first reading of uncodified ordinance number 1197. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Carried unanimously. Next, we'll go to the motion to introduce the ordinance number 1197. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1197 as submitted.
Thank you. And Ms. Lewis?
Second.
I have a motion by council member Jones, second by council member Lewis, to introduce uncodified ordinance number 1197. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walms?
Yes.
Freya?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Ordinance has been introduced. Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work. We spent about 20 minutes on an item that's taking months and months and hours and hours. And once again, we appreciate all the work that goes into this from all our staff and our legal counsel. Now we will go to item nine, consideration of adoption of city council resolution number 6501, authorizing and approving the purchase of the real property located at 610 Pacheco Boulevard, APN 026-121-006, and adopting a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2021 to 22, as it pertains to expenditures in the amount of $172,515.50. And we go back to Community and Economic Development Director, Sousa Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and city council. This particular item has been considered by the city for the purchase of 610 Pacheco Boulevard. And the purpose of that is to establish a gateway public space. And this is for the entrance to our downtown Los Banas. And this is just a part of the city's commitment to the revitalization and rehab of our downtown. So background on this particular item, in December of 2021, the city council approved the purchase and sale agreement and joint escrow instructions between the city of Los Banas and the Bellotti family. The project is located on the northeast corner of Sixth Street and Pacheco Boulevard. It's approximately 0.3 of an acre. And the general plan designation is commercial, and it is zoned highway commercial, HC. This is a street view, which I know is not within your PowerPoint packet, but I added last minute, this is a street view of Google Earth of that location of the northeast corner of Sixth and Pacheco. Within this particular project, staff negotiated a purchase price of $170,500, which is 10% within the appraised value. We then conducted due diligence. We performed a Phase One environmental study assessment through Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group, which recommended that we prepare a Phase Two, because a Phase One is just, it goes through historical reports, and it's really just a research of the property to identify if it had any questionable uses in its past. So based on the previous use of a fuel station historically there, it was recommended that we go to a Phase Two environmental study assessment. And then within that Phase Two, it concluded that through a soil sampling and air monitoring, testing of that, that, that area, that it did not appear to be a threat to groundwater or human health. And it was cleared to, for the city to move forward with the purchase. General plan conformance, it requires the city's planning agency to determine whether the location, its purpose, and extent of the property acquisition is consistent with our general plan. The planning commission did consider general plan conformity on May 11, 2022. The determination was that the general plan designation is commercial, and the zoning is highway commercial, which allows for public facilities and open space. So this would be consistent with those land uses. The fiscal impact, it would impact the general fund in fiscal year 21, 22, which would increase expenditures by $172,515.50. This is the purchase price of $170,500 plus half of the closing costs, which were within the escrow instructions with the Bellotti family. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution number 6501, authorizing and approving the purchase of 610 Pacheco Boulevard. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Council, before we go to the motion, does anyone have any question or comment? Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank staff, particularly Mrs. Elms, for putting this project together. And also, at the time, acting city manager, Breezy. I know he was instrumental in making that contact to the property owners. And so again, I thank you very much for working this through and bringing us to this point. It's, I think it's a major step in revitalization efforts. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Any other council members have any question or comment? Now, I will offer my praise and appreciation. The idea of putting that arch there has been something that I've been talking about and recommending for a very long time. It was a design for a beautiful arch made over 20 years ago. And so now we're going to go and revisit that and really, really let the world know just how big a deal Los Banas is, how beautiful it is, and, and just highlight all the, that we have to offer. And excellent work. Chief Breezy, when he was acting city manager, now city manager, Pinero, worked many hours, Mr. Vaughn, Ms. Elms, and Ms. Williams for making sure that the finances are all in order and make sure this all works. So we appreciate that. And chair will entertain a motion to approve, to adopt city council resolution number 6501. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt city council resolution number 6501 as submitted.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by council member Jones and a second by council member Yamas to adopt city council resolution number 6501 as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much again. And Ms. Elms, busy night? Item 10, advisement of public notices. We'll go to our Community and Economic Development, Community and Economic Development Director, Sousa Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So we do have one public hearing item. This is for Juan Carlos Gutierrez Alcaraz. He is operating as El Griense Hall Number Eight. This is actually a relocation, so it's not an additional mobile food vending unit, is a relocation of a previously approved unit at 1955 East Pacheco Boulevard. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, May 25, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item 11, city manager report. City manager, Pinero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I liked to communicate to folks last week, was able to take a trip on out to Washington, D.C., on the One Voice Trip that's put together by Merced County Association of Governments. Was able to participate with other cities within the county and able to go to Washington, have some fruitful conversations in regards to our airport and pioneer trails. They would have some conversations with the FAA, FCC, FRA, FHA, just various groups within Department of Transportation. So really good to have those contacts. Were able to have some conversations with Senator Padilla's office, Senator Feinstein's office, and Congressman Costa's office. Those fruitful conversations, once again, have engagement with them and let them know about the needs of Los Banos. So it was well attended, and we had a good turnout. Were able to work together collectively as a region with the MCA AG group. And so I felt it was quite successful for all of us, and been able to engage in conversation with them since about the needs of the city of Los Banos. So that was good. And the other thing I'd like to remind everybody is that tomorrow at 10:30, we have a groundbreaking ceremony of our police stations. Very, very exciting times. And I'd just like to say thank you to council for all the hard work that you folks have done in allowing this to move forward. So I really appreciate you folks for all that. I know as citizens, we appreciate that. So that's tomorrow at 10:30, groundbreaking ceremony, just right down the street over there by the courthouse. So if anybody can make it, please come on out. We'd love to see you there. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Pinero. City council member reports tonight. We start with council member Lambert, Mayor Portem Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all the staff, Stacy, Lucy, Sonia, for doing a great job getting all this put together. And also excited for tomorrow. It's going to be exciting to hear our chief get emotional about this new police station. So I'm excited. I hope he's, I know he's excited. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis? Let me get your button. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Yesterday evening, I attended the Livingston City Council meeting with the San Joaquin Air Quality Board staff to promote the various grants and monies that are out there for residents in Livingston, as well as residents in the county of Merced, to offer to help purchase, turn in their, their lawnmowers, their gas lawnmowers, and give vouchers for electric or either battery operated lawnmowers. There was a lot of information that was disseminated to the council that they weren't aware of. So I'm hoping that they will get that information out to their communities as well. We still have the cities of Gustine, the city of Atwater, and the city of Dos Palos to get this information to. So I'll continue to work with their staff to make sure that those cities have the same information that we've received, Merced has received, and now Livingston. It was a good presentation. Again, there's a lot of money out there accessible to people within the community to take advantage of, based on the laws that are coming down. So I, I hope that our community would take advantage of it. I would like to make a suggestion, which I made to Livingston last night, is for them to put a hit on the face of their city council, the city page website, so that it would be easily accessible for their residents to be able to find out what monies are available for them to be able to take advantage of. So that might be something I think that we should consider as well, is to put the air quality boards hit on the front of our website page, so that our community members know that there's money out there for trading in their old vehicles, lawnmowers, various items that they can get grants and loans for, and, and free money as well. I said I wasn't going to say anything again about the AquaSmart, but this would be for our community. I've used this product. There are a lot of products that are out there on the market. And the one thing that I learned about this particular product, that it has a five-year lifespan in the ground. There was, when I first learned about this, it was at Ewing, and they did an experiment at UC Merced, where they put the product in the same area, on part of, one part of the grass, they put the AquaSmart, the other part they didn't. And they only watered it one, one time during the week. And the AquaSmart product kept the grass green. You don't have to use a lot of it. Basically aerate your yard, put it down according to the instructions. And just based on the fact that we're looking at some pretty heavy restrictions that might be coming down from the state in regards to watering, for those of you who want to save your plants, your lawn, your trees, whatever you have, this product will help you. And I, like I said, I've used it. It's been more than five years now since I put it down, so I'm going to have to put it down again. And I know that, you know, I just really feel like we're going to have another tough summer. And I anticipate some restrictions coming down from the state based on emails that I've received. So it's just a wise investment to save your investments as, as a community members and to keep what you have green. Because after all, trees, your bushes, your flowers, all of that stuff has an ecosystem that helps eat up carbon monoxide in, in the air, and they have a worthwhile value. So I would encourage anyone who wants to save their, their landscaping to invest and look into this product. And again, there are other products out there. You have to put them down more frequently. This one, not so often. And the last thing I'd like to say is I'm dressed a little bit unusual tonight for city council, but the city of Los Banos, it has generally entered into an agreement with the Warriors Organization- with the Warriors organization as a sponsorship to allow us to use their logo for our basketball recreation season for the, for the city of Los Banas. So, as a strong supporter of the Warriors, you know, a lover of the Warriors, and for our youth in the community who love the Warriors, for adults in the community who love the Warriors, and anybody else around who loves the Warriors, I'm just saying, go Warriors! And for my new friends and homies in South America who may be watching tonight, go Warriors! And I, this is a sixth time that they've gone to the Western Conference Finals. So, I'm really proud of them. And it's almost like, I feel like they're my children. So, this is their, their saying for this year. It's called "Gold-blooded." And so, I'm gold-blooded this year for the Warriors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And go to Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lot of work done today. We're the culmination of a lot of work. So, I appreciate it again, staff's efforts and all this. The homeless, hopefully, we can start making some progress over with the encampment area and some of those residual problems we're having over there. Wanted to talk a little bit about some concerns I have regarding attrition of our staff. From what I understand, there's considerable staff who's left, both the uniform and otherwise. And we have this, we can come to these, to the conclusion of a big project like this when we have staff who's been here for a while, who has quite a bit of institutional knowledge, who's established themselves with adjacent agencies. They know points of contact. To have these folks leave, it's going to be a big vacuum, and it's going to take a long time to get up to that operational level that we're at right now. So, you know, from finance, Mrs. Williams, and what she does to ensure that we have the finances available. Director Elms, what she does in economic development. You know, for example, we have a new director that came aboard. They were instrumental, I'm sure, in helping along, providing points of contact, and speeding up his ability to become effective in the organization or in the city. So, again, I just, I want to let these folks know that I appreciate them, appreciate what they do, appreciate what they've done and the dedication to the city. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones?
I'll report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I've seemed a little bit distracted tonight. My very good friend of ours and loves the city of Los Banas, Cliff Brand, the band director at Los Banas High School for many years and Creekside Junior High, passed away last night. The Los Banas High School Band is doing their concert tonight, and they are doing, having some, some presentations. And they were supposed to honor him tonight, and he didn't quite make it. So, he was a very close friend, a phenomenal musician, and one of the greatest music teachers I have ever known, one of the greatest individuals, one of the greatest people I've ever known. So, may he rest in peace. And it's a little, it's been a big, it's been a big shock to, a big trouble to soul, all of us in the schools, everyone who's known him. We know that he and Shirley, his wife Shirley, have been very heavily involved in the community, donating time and providing all kinds of activity and services, both musical and civic. So, we want to remember him tonight. The band will, their concert will be running for a while. So, if you want to get over there, you can. I passed over, I missed item 12, so I'll cover those now. MCAG, my MCAG report. Tomorrow, the meeting includes the budget adoption for MCAG. And then, but as to clean energy, we have the e-bikes that Ms. Benetti brought us information on today. And I have nothing on the Measure V Committee. Finally, I had to miss the MCAG trip, the One Voice trip, because of a back injury. And I'm very sorry that that happened, but I wasn't going to be any good to anyone in the condition I was in. Finally, the homeless, we are hearing you. We have succeeded in housing and getting many homeless off the street, getting some of them some jobs. Now, we have to address this issue with the encampment, and we are going to continue to do that until we get it solved. I did have a meeting with, yesterday, with Assemblymember Gray and county officials and other city officials within the county. And Assemblymember Gray is saying that the state has some more money that they're going to be able, looking to bring to us to provide more services, particularly those wraparound services, which are so necessary in homeless. So, we'll continue to address it. I have been out to the camp. I did not go visit the families in the trailer park, but I have been out to see the camp, and it concerns me as well. So, thank you very much for coming and everyone who came to the meeting tonight on every item you spoke. Now, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lambert?
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion by Ms. Lewis and a second by Mr. Lambert to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned at, is that 8:11 PM? Are we correct? Okay, 8:11 PM. Pardon me?
It's the new clock.
It's the new clock. Thank you.